Girl Talk, Girl Talk. What's better than Girl Talk? Chat with the ladies about their day, the ups and downs along the way. She's a cook, she's a chauffeur, she's a worker bee. First in the door and last to leave. Makes way less than the guy next door. She knows she's worth much more. Girl Talk, Girl Talk. What's better than Girl Talk? Girl Talk, Girl Talk. What's better than Girl Talk?
Hi, I'm Regina Ayers and I'm the host of Girl Talk. For those of you that are new to Girl Talk, Girl Talk showcases women who are making a difference in their communities here in the Rogue Valley. It is a lively discussion of the opportunities, successes, and challenges that women face in their daily lives. It is election season 2020 and I am interviewing the women in the Rogue Valley who are running for elected office. I'm interviewing 14 of the women, but that's not all the women that are running for office. There are women running against men and women running against women. There's so many women that are running and I'm so amazed that they are stepping up to take on what it means to run a campaign and to win an election. During the filming of the interviews, the catastrophic fires in Talent in Phoenix took place on September 8th. You will see in the interviews that some of the women were asked about the fire and others were not. And some of the women were not able to reschedule. I wish all the candidates the very best in their campaigns. Let's get started. My guest today on Girl Talk is Sarah Spancelle and she is running for Ward 1 on the Medford City Council. Welcome, Sarah.
Thank you, glad to be here.
Glad you're here today. Let's start with a catastrophic fire that came to our valley on September 8th, destroyed large portions of Talent and Phoenix and perhaps some of Medford. Maybe you can tell us about it. But my question is where were you and your family when the fire started?
So we were at home. It was the first day of school. So we'd had a very short virtual Zoom session for both my kindergartner and first grader. And I was starting to hear news about the fire having started-
On the radio or TV or did you get a notice?
Social media, I think it came through. And I have, you know, connections with friends and so people at that end of town had messaged and said, "We heard a fire started." Who were actually lived very, very close to the ignition point in Ashland. And their house thankfully did not burn, but as we know, it moved north really quickly. I was also working on getting my voter pamphlet in at that time as well. So doing some typical multitasking at home with the kids and also on my other activities, like running for Medford City Council. And I was very fortunate, I feel very fortunate that I had got the pamphlet statement in about five minutes before I realized and, you know, other folks began to realize that the fire was spreading so much more quickly and heading into Phoenix. And at that point, I switched all gears and was just, I had a friend who is in Portland and was listening to our scanner and watching social media because, as I think many of our residents felt at that time, it was one of the places to get the quickest and kind of most up-to-date information about what was actually happening. And, you know, I have a friend who lives right on 99 in Phoenix and I think my phone call to him saying, "Please leave your house right now, like you have to go right now," came about five minutes before state troopers came to his door.
His door?
Yes, and let him know that he did need to go. So, you know, there was definitely, you know, it's nothing like we've ever experienced here. And yeah, it was definitely an interesting first day of school for us.
So are you in South Medford?
No, I actually live just around the corner here. Ward 1 is the northeast corner here of Med-
Northeast, okay.
We ended up in a Level 2 evacuation warning here and that's when our family actually did leave because my husband just was like, "Nope, I don't want to mess around with it. This is scary." You know, he had been working in Ashland and ended up needing to drive all the way, you know, through the back hills roads and come out on Highway 140 to get home that day.
So he was down in Ashland when the fire started and they closed I-5?
Yep, and the highway, obviously.
Yeah, 99.
Yep.
Too scary.
It was terrifying.
Yeah, especially with small children. I have pets, so you know, it's scary.
Yeah, no, and it's, you know, I've been following a lot of the social media, the stories of folks who actually were in the pathway, right, and how, you know, they were notified and their experiences through that. And, you know, Vanessa Houck on social media-
I know Vanessa and Jason.
Yeah, yeah. And so many of us do because they do so much amazing work in the valley. And hearing about their neighbor, you know, who was disabled and, you know, ended up just trying to get out of the fire but was blind and hiding in the river.
Oh, I didn't hear about that.
She shared stories of that and last I had heard from social media, he was still hospitalized from actually, you know, smoke or burn issues.
So that was on Valley View? Their home was on Valley View? Yeah, it's just, it's just too hard to believe. But yeah, I hope that it's going to take years.
It will, it will.
More than, you know, maybe a decade before those two communities will have recovered.
Yeah, one of the programs that I'm currently participating in is the Land Use Leadership Initiative, which is put on by a thousand friends of Oregon and, you know, prepares people like myself who are looking to move into leadership positions and give us, you know, some good information and knowledge around how land use policy works and what the laws are, these different things. And one thing they were sharing with us in this last week since the fires, excuse me, is that that land, you know, won't be usable for at least a minimum of a year and a half minimum, you know, and how do we keep our community together and support each other while we're, you know, waiting to build? Like even if we wanted to build right away, that's not an option immediately, so.
There's just so much to think through. Well, let's move on to our first question.
Okay.
Well, since the fires, there was a camp that sprung up rather spontaneously, it would seem, in Hawthorne Park. Now, that's not in your ward, is it?
It is not my ward, but obviously as a counselor, I'll serve the entire city.
Absolutely. And my understanding only from reading the paper was that it was primarily people, previously homeless people that had to evacuate from Bear Creek in the Greenway. And there were some people there that had been housed but camped there. Now, since that happened, the first perhaps couple of weeks, they have removed those people from Hawthorne Park. The police, I believe, came a couple of days ago. They gave them, I believe, 24-hour notice, came down, helped them relocate, trying to get some people to go to the expo, to go to the authorized campground. I think Road Retreat got involved. So what's your feeling about what happened there at Hawthorne Park?
So with the park in Hawthorne, first I think I would like to say that I was disappointed as I saw the first stories come out and the first reports about what had happened with the Almeida Fire and the impacts of it on our community. You know, the first numbers that we kept hearing were 600 homes. And I knew early on, you know, just from even seeing aerial footage or from what I had heard, you know, through social media or friends of what areas had burned and what was gone without even seeing it myself. You know, I said, "600, how is that even possible?" You know, like, and then later I'm like, "Oh, yeah, Rogue or Royal Oaks Mobile Home Community." That had 145 mobile homes. So we came to find that apartment buildings, you know, were being counted more as one structure and that none of the mobile homes were originally being counted in those numbers. You know, and then you take one step further and they were, you know, they were not houses, but they were homes to those who lived on the Greenway. And many had belongings and all of their personal belongings there. And, you know, our last point in time count, I think, you know, we were over 150 people, I want to say, living on the Greenway. And so those numbers were just, at least in the beginning, and I'm really glad to see that now we're getting more accurate, I think, reports of the actual impact on our community and how many actual homes, you know, were lost. Because if your home is a mobile home, it is still your home and it should count in those figures. So we're now at over 2,300. What, I have not been completely, obviously, involved. I would have liked to have been more involved in some of the community, you know, some of the community responses as far as volunteering and being able to be on the ground with my family and immediately getting back into homeschooling the following Monday after the fires. You know, that hasn't been as possible for me as I wish it was. That being said, my understanding is is that at least for a time, if not still currently at the Expo Center, they were not admitting people who were previously houseless. The current, we, Medford has done great things to get an urban campground in place in Medford. I'm not sure if you're aware that the temporary campground and Road Retreat is involved in that as well, right? And that's amazing, but the amount of people that they're able to serve are not meeting the needs of the actual number of houseless folks that we have here in our community. And so with Hawthorne Park, you know, I, I, I wouldn't say that I think that's the ideal place to set up an encampment, but it was a public space. What I saw happening, because I was able to go down there, I was able to bring down a tent and talk to a few folks a couple of times while they were still there. And I mean, just from my observations and I wasn't there, you know, camping or staying, but from what I observed was, you know, people coming together to try to help the most vulnerable in our community. And yes, many of those people struggle with substance abuse disorders, mental health issues, but in my opinion, you know, if we have the resources and that, especially in the time of a catastrophic event like the Almeida Fire, it's a time for not just Medford because these aren't just, it's not just folks from Medford, right? People were displaced all along this valley and all around us. That it's a time for our communities to come together. It shouldn't be just Medford's problem, you know? It should be the Rogue Valley coming together and finding better solutions and ways to support the folks who are down there. Originally, they did receive a week notice, but then the next day they were, they changed it to the 24-hour notice, which I personally was a bit disappointed by because I think, you know, had they given people and folks some more time, that, you know, I, I feel fairly confident that there are folks who were on, who were in the park, who, you know, they did sort of, I think the newspaper and the mayor's statement said that 30-some folks, you know, they found more places for. But there were, my understanding is there were at least like 100 folks, you know, staying down there. So I'm not sure where those other people have gone. Some of the volunteers who have been active on social media did say that they saw some of those people coming in through the Jackson County Jail later in that day, either through mental health crises or other issues that they experienced later that day. And, you know, I think, just to me, it's heartbreaking, you know, where are those folks supposed to go? And there are recent court decisions and grants passed where they're now, you know, a court decided that you cannot find people if, for sleeping outside if you have no place to allow them to go.
You don't have any place to offer them.
Yeah. And I'm just not confident, you know, I am not one-on-one with all the folks who are down there, but I'm not confident that all of those people who were asked to leave the park actually found a place to go. So that's concerning to me, yeah.
Medford has made tremendous progress, I think, in addressing the homeless situation. And I, you know, Ashland was the first to have, well, no, I'm not going to say that. Oh, an emergency shelter or a seasonal shelter. And then that, that moved on to Medford. Medford has Hope Village, which I think is great and I think Ashland is thinking about, you know, tiny houses and that sort of thing. So great progress, but so much more to do. And so if you're elected to Medford City Council, what are going to be some solutions, some proposals that you may put forward to, to house people that are unhoused?
So I think that the successes that we've had are something that we need to continue to build off of. You mentioned Hope Village. You know, there've been other communities like that in Oregon as well that have also been hugely successful. And that is definitely something that we should continue to, you know, replicate. Let's do what works. Let's do what we can see having success and having a positive impact on people's lives here in our community. The temporary campground is temporary. You know, I think we need more transitional housing. Whether it's temporary campgrounds, it's definitely better than nothing if, you know, those are the choices. But I think that if our communities work together, that we can come up with a lot better options for Jackson County, not just Medford. Because again, I think this is an issue-
It's regional.
It's regional, this, you know. And, and I mean, just on that note, 19.8% of Medford's population is below the poverty level, which actually the rest of the country is at 13.1%, so we're above average and not in insignificant way.
Amazingly, Ashland is too.
And, you know, most of those folks in those, in that, in that statistic are women. Most of them 25 to 34. And then the next highest would be 18 to 24-year-old women, then men 25 to 34, and then girls 6 to 11. So what that tells me is it's young families, right? And we're talking about solutions in the future, both for houseless folks, but as we are currently living in a pandemic under an emergency order where folks cannot be evicted right now for inability to pay their rent. I've yet to be able to find data or information. I've reached out to some friends who are involved with like the Southern Oregon Rentals Owners Association and inquired, you know, do we have data about how many people are actually struggling right now? You know, we know unemployment has risen. We know that. But how many people are actually going to be at risk as soon as the emergency is lifted from this pandemic of being evicted and losing their homes? And how much is it going to exacerbate that? And I think we need to be thinking about that now so that it doesn't just happen and we're not prepared and ready to meet that need, not just continuing for people who are already currently houseless, but for those folks who may be in a much more dire situation once the emergency is lifted. Because right now, obviously, they're able to maintain their housing, so.
Well, my understanding is Hope Village was, that is city land, city property. And there was some pushback on the first location and then you were able to work something out and again, it was city property. So as a, as a new city counselor, do you, I'm assuming you'd support that the city would offer additional city property in order to perhaps build some more Hope Villages, more for families than they are, I think currently more for single or a couple people?
Well, I believe Hope Village was specifically built for veterans too.
Oh, veterans, okay.
That's my understanding, which is amazing and we need more of that for those communities as well. Yeah, I think we need to look at that for, again, just continuing to expand what we have, but continuing to be creative and look at models that have worked elsewhere. Because obviously, we're not the first in the country to be experiencing these issues and these problems. And, and we can, you know, look at what's worked places. You know, I mean, part of that too, though, is, you know, what are the statistics for Medford? 30% of our renters spend more than half their income on their housing. That's a huge number. And I mean, but the other side of that, besides just looking at housing, is also our, our job opportunities here. And, you know, having living wage jobs and, you know. So all of that, I think, really works together. And if you have people with living wage jobs and, you know, can feel like they're valued as a worker, a lot of your other issues are going to go, go away too. You know, drug, substance abuse, you know, is something that comes out of desperation often. You know, and if you are not desperate, it's much less likely that you'll fall into that problem.
So do you have any thoughts, any, any projects that you would put forward as a new city counselor that would address the economic situation in Medford or the Rogue Valley to increase the number of working, you know, wages, living wage jobs? We have a lot of minimum wage jobs, but we don't have a lot of living wage jobs. So have you thought about the economy?
Yeah, yeah. Well, I mean, I think my family is kind of a great example, a little bit, of what it is like to be our age, you know, growing. So we, I grew up here. I'm born and raised in the valley. Born and raised here in Medford until I was five and then after being adopted later in life, when I was seven, I ended up in the Phoenix Town School District, though primarily I lived in the foothills over outside of Phoenix in Medford. And when we, when my husband graduated college in 2004, he had a biology degree and I had discontinued going to school due to a lack of ability to pay for school and housing at the same time. So I was just working full-time at a minimum wage job here in the valley. And in 2004, you know, looking around, looking at the job markets, he applied for things, but it just wasn't feasible. And for us, you know, we saw Portland and the job opportunities there as being, you know, a way to get, get ourselves going in life, so to speak. And so we moved to Portland and did live up there until we were ready to start our family and we had great jobs, you know. Definitely, we're still not up to, even now, what we were making as a two-income family in Portland. But when we decided to start a family, this is where we wanted to be. You know, I love this valley so much, you know. My family's been here for a couple generations. This is home and it always has been home. But coming back, we struggled because we made that decision. We had housing figured out, fortunately, some pretty, a very good deal on housing, but, you know, that we came hoping, just hoping to get a job. It was a year, a good solid year and my son Simon was about a year old before Zach found something that wasn't minimum wage. And that was only because he was accepted into the apprenticeship program to become an electrician. So for the next four years, though, I mean, because an apprentice starts out pretty much about minimum wage, maybe slightly above, right? And it's several years before you really start to get close to those actual journeyman-
And this is a man with a biology degree.
With a biology degree, yes. And so when he was, I think he was 35 when we came back here, 33, 30, somewhere in there. Yeah, restarting a whole new career, right? And that was a challenge. But because it was, you know, a technical program that was available here and that he was able to get into, you know, we're doing great now. Like I consider us a success story. You know, it wasn't without support, you know, both from our community and families that we were able to maintain living here and having those low wages. But that to me, you know, is a reason why I really care about career technical education. You know, the more that we can grow and expand what we've already started here. I know we passed Measure 98, or yeah, 98, a few, a few years back that was to support that in schools. And North Medford High School here in the ward has started a program and I've heard nothing but excellent things about it. But just continuing to grow those programs and also making them accessible for people like my husband who, you know, aren't teenagers, but also, you know, just maybe want to start a new career or try to, you know, move up from just service level jobs that are minimum wage. And expanding those opportunities, I think, here is really important and would give us a leg up in, in Oregon and, you know, just economically and be able to continue to grow our valley.
Well, we're lucky we have the community college. It, it, it's really an asset for our, for our region.
Absolutely.
Yeah. As I understand it, the, the Kahoots program that's out of Eugene is one that addresses a lot of social programs that the police are currently addressing because nobody else is willing to address it. So they go on wellness checks, they, you know, people that are drunk and can't get home. They do all kinds of things. People that are having mental breakdowns in the public. So they're doing all of that because they have to. So Kahoots addresses those issues so that people don't get involved. I mean, the police don't get involved. And there's, there's a EMT worker and there's a mental health person and they transport those people where they need to go. So would you, as a new council, would you support a program like that coming to town? Which is not cheap, it's not going to be cheap, which means those monies would have to come from someplace. So what are your thoughts about that?
The Kahoots program that Eugene and Springfield that has been presented a few times here in the valley and I have been able to participate and ask questions and hear what they had to say, I think is a fabulous program. That it may cost some money to invest, but my understanding from reading over what's gone on since implementing that in the Eugene-Lane County area is that it actually has saved them a ton of money because so many fewer people are incarcerated. The beginning of the question, you mentioned the jail. I was one of the people who also opposed that and did vote no against that along with 70% of the rest of the county. And it's not that I don't think our jail can, needs improvement. It is old and, you know, has many, my understanding, dilapidated areas and whatnot. But again, as I said earlier, I think that, you know, part of what really is the key is like removing people's desperation and need to, you know, commit crimes. And the more that we have programs like Kahoots and people who are set up, both the social services, though, I think is the other piece, because we can have Kahoots and I think it would take a lot of the burden. Because I do think there's a burden on our police officers. But one of the things that I've seen, looking at numbers, you know, over the last few months on these subjects, if you look at police funding, and this may not be just specific to Medford, but I would guess that we're probably similar to the rest of the country. But as we, you know, since the seventies, we have seen a drastic increase in the amount of funding for our police departments. Whereas you can look at a line and almost simultaneously, whereas they used to be at about the same point for social services, the social service spending, you know, and funding has just gone downhill since over that, the last few decades, whereas the funding of the police has gone up. And of course, as you defund those programs, the police are going to have to pick up that slack and, you know, handle the issues that historically aren't maybe in their, their wheelhouse of public safety. I think there's been enough stories too, both in Oregon, you know, and around the country, of people, you know, having an issue even with their child, who is having a mental health breakdown. And they have no one else to call, so they call the police. And many times, that's either ended in them, unwittingly so, having their child incarcerated or in sometimes, you know, hurt, killed even. And, you know, it's different training for these different problems. And we need different responses, not the same response, right, to any issue like that. And if there's an issue of public safety, of course, we like need police, you know. They serve a purpose for those sorts of things. But there are too many things, and I mean, substance abuse and mental health, I mean, are the two big ones that come to mind that, you know, we don't maybe always need an armed officer to appear who, in many of those instances, is going to just escalate the situation as opposed to de-escalate it, which I think is what a lot of the Kahoots personnel and people working on those teams, the EMTs and the trans social workers and whatnot, are, are better equipped to support. And it takes that burden off the police, you know. If I were a police officer, I would feel very stressed about all of the pieces, you know, that they are holding. And, you know, I'm, I hold a lot of roles in my life as a mother and a granddaughter and all these things, but there's certain things that definitely I wouldn't want lumped on to me and that, you know, other people are better equipped to handle. So that's kind of how I look at it. I think, you know, they're, if, if we're smart about it, and I think the Kahoots, again, has proven to save money in Lane County overall. I'm not sure what their initial investment into that program was. You know, something that, as a councillor, I would definitely be looking at. But my understand, from what I understand, you know, it has actually saved them a lot of money as a county and as cities. So I don't see, I don't see any real drawback from us, like, looking to go down that path here.
So as a new city council, you would support something like?
Absolutely.
Good. Now, Medford has a ward system, Ashlyn does not. So a city councillor there runs for?
The entire city.
Entire city. But you have a ward which has geographical boundaries. So can you tell me, are there specific issues that you're gonna be representing for your ward? Or is it, I, I guess I don't understand how that all is gonna work.
I'm not sure that there's any specific issues here. I know there's been some talk of a Circle K development that seems to be really impactful. Or there's been a lot of signs in our area here about that. That's not something I have dove deep into, honestly, as far as a ward issue.
Would the council have any control over that?
I would think so.
Oh, they would, okay.
I would think so, since it's land use. But, I mean, mostly, I would just point out that, you know, the population of my ward, which seems to be, from what I've, you know, because I've been taking a look at this. And, you know, we have senior citizens and a lot of young families. And both of those demographics, you know, I think similarly to the rest of Medford, have a lot of issues with the housing costs. I don't think that that is something that's specific just to the west side of Medford. I think people struggle on this side too, perhaps less so in my ward. But once you're elected, even out of a ward system, any decision that I make is going to, you know, affect the whole city. There's no specific, well, you're Ward One councillor, so you get to vote on this and only this, so. It's just a strange way that they decide to do the elections differently. And it seems to be the more, the least, the lesser common way that they run these usually.
Although Ashlyn, they've tried to put that forward too, but it hasn't happened yet. I asked almost all the candidates, what are their top three priorities? And so I'm gonna ask you that question. What will be your top three priorities if you're elected to the Medford City Council?
My top three priorities, and we've talked a lot about them already, is housing. The economy, so particularly building up so that when my children graduate, they have the option to stay in the Rogue Valley and have successful careers and options here to live and be successful. And then healthcare, which there's so many pieces to that that we can talk about. It's really hard to focus, but again, we've talked about it some. I think mental health support and substance abuse support here in the valley. I've heard, I have a close friend who works with the mobile unit and serves a lot of the houseless population. And one thing that she just said last night was, you know, when people are ready to make that change and to go into recovery, it's something that you need to, it's when that decision happens is when it needs to happen. And the fact that we have folks needing to wait so long from when they make that decision to get into treatment, you know, is, is detrimental. And, you know, I think that there were, there was a woman who was in her early thirties in the last, I want to say, year, who was houseless and was found, passed away, I think, from ODing. And from what I heard, she had been seeking treatment just prior to that, but was unable to get into a program right away. And so that's something that we really need to focus on here. I also mentioned, you know, the seniors. I, and I, I don't think it was part of our interview that we were having, but as we were checking in, I mentioned that my grandmother is now in hospice. And I've been helping her with that and become her power of attorney and her advocate. And, you know, through that, I've really been able to see, you know, what it's like for someone with very little support and resources in our valley. You know, that through the Land Use Leadership Initiative Program, I've learned a lot about age-friendly communities and design. ARP has made a few presentations about this. And it's amazing, you know, what communities can do and how you can set it up. And if it benefits your seniors, generally, it's also gonna benefit your, the, the younger families in your community as well. These are things that work for everyone. So yes, housing, healthcare, and our job economy, so.
Great, good, good priorities.
Thank you. And I, I would be remiss to say that, you know, I developed those kind of three priorities before the fire. So I definitely also have some concerns about our emergency preparedness here that, you know, one could also consider kind of a piece of healthcare as well, though. And just infrastructure, so.
You were part of the Southern Oregon Emerge class that happened last fall, I believe. And that was the first one here. And I actually did a couple of interviews for the graduates there. So there were twelve women in that class, and we have five women out of that class that are running for elected office in two thousand and twenty. I find that great. So when you attended that class or made the decision to go to that class, were you already thinking about running for office? Or did you get inspired when you took that class?
I was definitely already considering running for office at that point. I had been doing work here in the community for a few years. I would say prior to moving back home, that was not anything on my mind. But as I moved back to the Rogue Valley, started to volunteer and get involved because I had more flexibility from not working full-time and just having young children who weren't yet in school, right? So I spent a lot of my time volunteering, finding out where and how I could have the most immediate impact on my community. And through that work, you know, so much of it kept coming back to policy and, you know, city councils and state legislature. And I also had people that I, you know, was volunteering with and working with in these places, you know, start to say, hey, Sarah, have you thought about this? So that was before Emerge. And, you know, so it had started to become on my mind. And I became more, you know, politically and civically involved outside of just, you know, volunteer-based organizations that aren't, you know, that are C3s. I became more politically active and, yeah. And then when I had the opportunity to move to Medford, you know, I was the second person to file in this race. And when I filed, Kurt Ankerberg was the only candidate who had filed thus far. And, you know, regardless of the issues, I mean, I think that just my leadership style would serve Medford and that the skills that I've developed, you know, doing the groundwork and working with my community and communicating with people, you know, of all different perspectives, that I was the better candidate. And so that's why I decided to run here. I like to kind of start on the, the ground floor of things. My, my employment career, I've kind of always started out at the base level, but I'm, I've learned quickly and worked my ways up and, you know, have been just a proven leader, I guess, in those areas. So I feel confident that I can do the same for Medford and be a councillor that they'll be proud of.
Good, good. So if you are elected to the Medford City Council, and Kay Brooks is elected to the Medford City Council, she's running for reelection.
Correct.
You will be the only two women on the council. And you will have seven men. You'll be in the minority there. And my understanding is that there needs to be a critical mass of women or underrepresented people in a body in order for them to really be heard. And I think it's, I don't know, thirty, thirty-five percent. So you're gonna be a little short on that one. So how are you gonna ensure that your voice? And I'm, I know that having women on the council will bring a new, new perspective on there that needs to be heard. How are you gonna ensure that, that your voice is heard on that council?
So thank you for bringing that up, because I do think that it is worth pointing out that, I mean, one of my principles is that there should be a fairly equal representation at any level of government. And you're absolutely right. Incumbent City Councillor Kay Brooks is currently the only woman out of the mayor and all of the other council members. And I'm, besides her, running for, rerunning for her seat, the only other woman running, period, in Medford. So that being said, you're also right, you know, those spaces. Though I would like to think that I've gotten somewhat accustomed to that in some of the work that I've been doing in the last few years, because, I mean, we do still just live in a, you know, society that is fairly dominated in positions of leadership by men. And that's something that I've been navigating, but whether it's in the place of employment and previous jobs that I've had, or volunteer roles where I've moved up into leadership roles, either chair of something or a board member with All Care's Community Advisory Council. I am not shy about voicing my opinions and speaking up for people, especially if I feel like those voices aren't being heard. I, I'm a register, well, I'm a member of the National Association of Parliamentarians and care a lot about parliamentary procedure. And making sure that everyone's voice is heard and fairly, that's extremely important to me. I also find it fairly intuitive, you know, I've heard, I, I feel like a lot of people dismiss these rules and parliamentary process is hard or difficult. And I just assumed that myself, you know, for many years before I started actually reading what it had to say and realized that it's actually really intuitive. Because generally, if you just think about what is the most fair, that's usually what the rule is. And so I'm, I'm really interested in just getting more input into the council from the community as well. And I think that's something that I've proven through other work that I've done, that I'm good at. I'm good at getting word out about things. I'm good at encouraging folks to participate and making it feel like a place where their voice will matter and telling people that. You know, me running for council maybe is also just an example of that as well, is that, you know, if you keep, if you keep involved and you keep active, that, you know, there's opportunities and a place for your voice.
Well, how can we get more women running for office?
I think supporting programs like Emerge is one way to go about it. It's also just encouraging women that you know, who have the skills that you think it takes to lead, to, to run for office. I do think it's true, and I mean, it happened to me, and I've seen it happen to other women in the valley. It takes people telling them and encouraging them. It would seem like with, you know, the average male candidate, they don't need to be asked or told to do that, they just do. You know, the, my opponents, you know, have run in many elections over the years. And, you know, but with the women, and especially the women coming out of the Emerge class, Terry Martin, you know, I'm not sure that was ever really on her, from being in the class with her and hearing her personal story, something that she was originally planning on and was part of her goal. But she saw a need and enough people, you know, asked her, and she realized, like, I have the skills to do this. You know, why not, why not me? And other women realizing that. I would especially also, you know, like to see more diversity. And obviously, that's not me, but, you know, at least more women and definitely more diversity in our, in our leadership as well, I think, is important, because I do think other voices are getting lost.
Well, if you get elected, I think you'll be a great role model for other women in the valley to run for office.
Yes.
So do you have any closing remarks that you would like to say to the audience?
In closing, I mean, yes, I think just, I'm a councillor who you will be able to trust. I'm a councillor who you would be able to be proud of. I will ensure that all the voices of our community are heard and that we have a robust public input process and listen to everyone and make sure that even if I don't agree with them, they have their moment to share their opinions. But at the same time, constantly having an open mind, because I've changed my opinions on many things over the years, but just by keeping an open mind and constantly learning. And that's what I plan to do for Medford and hoping to make it a better community and safer for everyone and so that we can all, we can all have the community that we, we should have here.
Well, thank you for joining me today on Girl Talk.
Yeah, thank you.
And good luck with your campaign.
Thank you.
This series showcases women who are running for elected office in two thousand and twenty. I hope that you learn something about why they're running, who they are, and whether you'll be able to support them when you vote on November third. Now more than ever, we need leaders who are up to the task of rebuilding our communities. Leaders who can create the strategies, execute the plans, and take us all forward to a more hopeful future. Whether you vote for these women or not, remember to vote on November third. Girl Talk can be seen on Channel fifteen on Ashlyn Home Net or Channel one eighty-two on Spectrum, or always on demand at rvtv.sou.edu. You can also watch Girl Talk on my Regina Ayers YouTube channel for all Girl Talk episodes. I'm Regina Ayers, and thanks for joining me on Girl Talk.